Actually donated by Dyke Men. And so Steve and Ms. Esther Turner, we actually have to leave with Dyke so that way they can send us over two votes.
Okay, absolutely. Great. Appreciate that, Dyke. Yes. Just real quick, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for donating to the Hustle Sports Football Camp and also volunteering to come out speak to the kids. For those who don't know, we're having a football camp August 4th. And I've mentioned it's a free camp for the kids and I'm able to have a free camp through sponsorship and donation. And Chief in the Police Department donated and he volunteered to come out and talk to the kids. So we want them to see that there are things that you can do where you don't have to run behind the ball. And there are professionals out there that are more important than athletes. So I just want to thank you for leading when it comes to that aspect and always pouring it back to this community.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Regarding our chief, I know the meeting. I know, but I feel like one of the cards, I noticed you didn't get it. So have the meeting. Okay, no problem. Thanks, sir. Oh, and chief, I did get the information on the back-to-school program that gentleman in route to Officer Bennett. So they should be in touch. Ordinance violations, Officer White's not witness to seeing me. Councilman Williams, did you understand the letters are going out or have been going out?
Yes, letters have not been going out and so White is continuing. He said he's going to see three other properties.
Let me say something on that. On the first of those, on the first month, first meeting of the month, I've changed Officer White's schedule to where he'll be here anticipating those, he'll bring you those reports. So you can expect him to be here every, every first of the month.
Oh, great. Thank you, chief. Well, again, we want to thank you and Officer White for that support and Ms. Herndon for helping to get those letters out working with Councilman Williams. So I've been getting the calls, so I know they're going out. Matter of fact, a gentleman stopped me in the artery a little earlier today and asked if I knew about it. And I said, "Yeah, those cars need to go." What else do you want to talk about? So it's, it's working. We appreciate you. From a public work standpoint, we had a major issue over the last few days out at the Greenfield Lift Station. USW was helping us diagnose it, but our own Mr. Silver was the one that went out there with our city backhoe and him and Mr. Villanueva and they changed out that pipeline. Just wanted, it was suggested to be redone, but it had been clogged and they cleared that out to again keep the city functioning on a regular basis. We've got a lot of what we need in-house and that's been a true blessing. The city council reports. Councilman Rowland.
Good evening, citizens. It's always an honor and pleasure to be able to serve you and work with you in the community. Just an update I've been having. One, I wanted to just take this opportunity to thank Councilman Jones and Councilman Wallace for coordinating a meeting last week with Tech Dot. Citizens came to city council meeting with some issues and those city councilmen coordinated a much-needed meeting where citizens wanted to communicate about some concerns they had. And so I want to take them for taking initiative and lead during that. A second, we had the Organization in Prairie View hosted a Father's Day Golf Tournament in Cypress. We also, the Coca, I had an opportunity to go to the Coca-Cola facility in Fort Worth representing the City of Prairie View, but also another organization that I serve on the board for. And at that Corporate Advisory Board meeting, we have different corporations who serve and the goal and opportunity is to, we hosted them in the City of Prairie View six years ago and the goal is to host them in the City of Prairie View coming up in the next 12 months. And so once we kind of get our, our plan, our zoning and everything together and we can be able to say, you know, if a company like, so we have Cracker Barrel who's on our Corporate Advisory Board, you have HEB, you have other corporations to then potentially try to go after one of them coming to the City of Prairie View or even just Walla County in general. I had also the opportunity to go to be a delegate at the Texas Democratic Convention. Also, again, we meet here on the first and third Wednesday for Boy Scouts. Our boys last, where they're working on two merit badges currently that I'm doing the training for, Entrepreneurship in American Business. Ms. Miller, who's the Vice President for the Prairie Chamber of Commerce, had the opportunity to observe the young men learning about entrepreneurship in American business. Merit badges here in the City of Prairie View. Those young men are off to camp right now in Oklahoma. They went with another, they went with the Super Troop. They went with the troop from Windsor Village, United Methodist Church. And so they have about three buses of young men who are in scout camp in Oklahoma. So again, please say a prayer for our Boy Scouts that we have here in the City of Prairie View. And if you see Mr. Roberts when he gets back, he's with them. So please say thank you. The Prairie Chamber meets on the last Thursday of the month. We'll be having our meeting at 12 o'clock PM. Again, we're always looking for new members, community members or people who have small businesses who want to engage in commerce. Please come out and support. Thank you for allowing me to serve. And if you have any questions or concerns or things that I can do, I'm here to help. Thank you. Oh, and I had the opportunity, well, I had the opportunity to also go to a Black Millennials Political Convention. Because our community are made up of students, college students. It was an opportunity to engage with four different sectors of citizenry. You had college students who were there. You had politicos, meaning people who were engaged in politics, whether it be policy or organizing. You had elected officials who were there. And then you just had the regular public and it was an opportunity for everyone to see that there's no one person that moves a community. Everyone has a role to play. And so this is something that the members of the Black Caucus and members have been planning for some time. And so you have two good friends, a guy named Wes Bellamy, Dr. Wes Bellamy from the City of Charlottesville and Joel Jones, who's a state representative in Michigan, who were spearheading this committee. So it was a great honor to be there and we also had several Prairie View students who were there as well. And again, this is by coincidence. But again, definitely an honor and opportunity to continue to get perspective, but also to serve in our community. As many of you know, there's a lot of things going on nationally with immigration detention. Our city is not one of the cities by the border, but again, there's a national thing, there's a lot of national things going on that impact our community as well. Again, thank you.
Good evening. I'll be brief. First, I want to highlight August 4th, 8:00 to 1:30, at Walla High School, we'll be having our third annual Hustle Sports Football Camp. As I mentioned earlier, it's 100% free for any child, the ages 5 to 15. So if you have a child, you have a grandchild, a niece, nephew who wants to come out to a football camp, we have, we have people who have volunteered at times who have played at every level of football. We have pro athletes, college athletes, and they volunteer at times. If you want to be a donor or sponsor, the only way we provide these free services is because people from the communities and local businesses have written checks for us. And I always give the side note that our first year, we charged for the camp, but realizing that that wasn't, that we weren't having this camp to try to make money, we decided that we were going to figure out a way to make it accessible for any child who wanted to participate. So we started talking to people, talking to businesses and we went from having probably 25 to 35 kids the first year to having over 100 kids the second year. And we just launched our website on Wednesday and we had over 50 kids registered within the first 12 hours. And so we anticipate probably 250 kids, but we feed them three times. We have, we have full agenda for them to do. We teach them their basics. We have people like Chief Solomon who doesn't have anything to do with sports to come out and teach them about life because we want them to understand that there's more to life than sports. But sports may be the avenue or the gateway that provides you an opportunity. So if you, if you want to participate, I have information. If you have a child who wants to participate, if you want to volunteer, please let me know. Everybody who's on the board are Walla High School graduates. So we have, we have very vested interest, vested interest in our community, in our kids. Next thing, I was honored to be invited to Baltimore on Friday for the HBCU Digest Awards, where I was awarded the HBCU Digest Male Student of the Year. Apparently I was the first grad student to ever receive that award. So it was an honor to be able to represent the city and represent this community in Baltimore. I was also able to attend the Black Millennials Conference and as Councilman Rowland expressed, it was, it was important to see young, young people who want to be involved and they're people from all over, all over the country who bring a different energy. And knowing that the people who built bridges for us are getting to the point where it's time for them to relax, it was, it was encouraging for me to see 20-year-olds who were enthused about public service. And so we live in a time where we have a lot of concerns about what the future may bring. But going to this conference gave me, allowed me to breathe a little bit easier about the future because I know there is a demographic of young people who are ready to take charge, who are ready to lead in their respective communities. As always, Prairie View is home for me, so being able to serve is the greatest, greatest honor and privilege that I could possibly have and I appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Hello, world. My name is Kendrick Jones and I appreciate the opportunity to serve and do my duty. Last week, I'd like to thank Ms. Dorothy Carter as well as Dr. Peter Brown. They helped me put together Manny Zante's first meeting. They helped us with the agenda and things that such. So I really appreciate that. And just a little personal note, if you guys over the last year or somehow, so if you got a chance to get to know me or I see you either in church involvement or just meetings, you know, everything I do is genuine. Once somebody put me up to this, I was flipped a long time ago because you guys do throw a lot of bricks and stones, but they don't hurt me. At the end of the day, they only make me stronger. So when you guys do come and you guys do give me constructive criticism, I go back and I take a look in the mirror and it only makes me stronger and I evaluate what you say and I move forward. So when you guys have some concerns such as the University Drive Project that we wasn't too much aware about and I heard you guys concerned, I tried to present an opportunity for you guys to get your voices heard and things of that such. So as of now, I have some of the citizens receipts and things of that such to try to get the contractor to reimburse you guys for some of the things that you guys have to pay for to protect you guys, to keep you guys healthy and alive. As well as hearing several complaints about Dooley Street, trying to move forward, see how they can be another route adjusted so that they may turn and go to the university and things of that such. I also got the chance to go to the Black Millennials Convention Conference. It was pretty much eye-opening. It was great to see individuals that are white market pushing and striving basically for change and enlightenment and to make sure that we're going in the right direction. As well as Manny Zante have also been working on forming a youth council. And like I said, one reason why I'm up here because I like to live by being the change that I want to see in the world. So if I didn't see it, then that means I'd have to go out and do my job and see what I could do to be that change. And also, I also spoke into existence Jonathan Randall winning HBC Another Year Award. I seen him in the hotel lobby before he left. He was just like, "Yeah, I don't know." He's blessed to receive that opportunity, showing how much of a humble guy he is. But me knowing him personally and him working, us working together, I knew that God was going to bless him with that opportunity. So as always, as we always say, thank you for the opportunity, sir. And just stick with us. At the end of the day, I promise you, when I would turn this up, whether or not you choose to reelect this or we choose to go a different path, the city is going to be loved better than it was before when we got in that seat. So thank you.
Councilman Williams.
Good evening. Thank you for everyone that came out. I'm also on 4B and I want to encourage the citizens who live in the City of 4B to come, to come to the 4B meeting. Also, if you have a business or you're thinking about starting a business, come see us. We need more businesses in this City of Prairie View and we may possibly be able to help you do that. As well as, it was brought up at our 4B meeting, the concerns about a comprehensive plan that is supposed to take place and citizens have brought that up and I did reach out to the mayor as well as send Dr. Fendy an email trying to set up a town hall meeting with possibly, hopefully President Simmons' gratter, Fendy, at the community center, which is the legislature's office. So we're going to see how that goes and I'm giving the mayor's help in order to do that. Also, I spoke with Mr. Lassick and he says that we still haven't sent that paperwork that we need to send back to him instead of about getting the streets. And thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, congratulations on John Delando for winning that award. I always like to see other people being, doing well and being successful in their own endeavors. So congratulations on that. Recently, I had a meeting with the Dollar General. I know a couple of citizens have been talking to me about a couple of different things in terms of a standard of respect and also, you know, with a lot of things when it comes to stockings, you know, blocking the way within the aisles. So I talked to the general manager. He said, you know, one of the reasons was because they're going in and out of season, but because people are making a note to them, you know, it's his job to make sure everything is more efficient and better. So I want to be cognizant of, you know, keeping our businesses accountable in terms of the standard that they hold, especially serving us as citizens. So I'll continually, if you ever have any response about any other entity within the city, please let it be known because we want to hold a high standard. Also, I was able to go to a Prairie Chamber of Commerce meeting, also Economic 4B meeting. I can let y'all know that these entities are truly working hard to move the city forward and the respectful things that they do. One thing I do charge Economic 4B and Prairie Chamber of Commerce is that one representative from Prairie Chamber of Commerce go to Economic 4B meeting and Economic 4B representative go to Prairie Chamber of Commerce. Because even though they, they do different things, they still try to move business forward in Prairie. And I feel like there's a lot of communication that can be had, you know, if both entities are at the same table, be able to discuss, you know, what they discovered or what they learned to help move the city forward. As Councilman Jones mentioned earlier about the youth council, one thing, I love mentorship. I love building, you know, the next generation, the next leaders. And as someone does me, I want to move on to the next group. And lastly, I've been working on my ministry, Abundance of Hands. So me and another student, we wanted to, you know, establish a ministry in which, you know, students could go out and help those, you know, outside of the university because I want us to be able to bridge that gap, you know, work together to, you know, to bring the city forward. And, you know, with, with Abundance of Hands Ministry, it's going to be ran through a church in which, you know, there's some issues in which you may need help with. We're going to try to have students sign up at the church so that whenever your problem is made known that we can send some people out to help out and just bridge that gap through community service and just loving upon one another. So once again, I thank y'all for the opportunity to serve this great city.
Thank you, sir. There were, as many of you know, we had quite a few residents that were impacted by Hurricane Harvey and we recently found that there were approximately $742,000 that were quote-unquote informally designated for Prairie View residents to apply that were impacted by the hurricane. And a little over a week ago, I met with a gentleman who's going to assist us because as you know, we've got much work and few hands. So they're in the business of helping to do that type of paperwork for grants and that sort of thing. So Nick's going to be helping me with that. And he said in their experience, the targeted funds could adjust slightly, slightly up, slightly down, but typically fall within that framework. We had a meeting with myself, Ms. Dickie, Judge Alexander, Chief Solomon, with the FEMA people and the Walla County people about two months ago, Ms. Dickie, something like that. And FEMA and the state shared that process with us and that sort of thing. And we had an option of essentially applying under the county, but with this agency's help, we should be able to apply on our own because one thing was clear too, that whoever the applicant is controls the check. So if they find out that we've, not that we found out that they targeted those type of funds for us and we've got folks who've abused them particularly along the Ruby Road area and going into Rosewood, some of the folks that were totally flooded out. So we're going to take a look and try to go after those funds on our own that are targeted for the City of Prairie View. A little over a week ago, submitted a $445,000 Smart Health Telemedicine and Distance Learning Grant, again, to go with the Smart City concept, but also to go after some money. We need more money. We need new money and that's how we expand and grow. And there are a lot of funds that are targeted. Mayor Grant's going to share some specifics about what his city has experienced so that you'll really have an even better idea because we're just in that introductory stage with the collaboration in the MO meeting with the Dr. Jack Jovi, the VP of Research at the university and his folks that helped submit that. And so that grant can pay as much as up to $3 million to the National Science Foundation after we got the initial $100,000 research grant. So we're going in those directions. Attended a meeting last Monday and was actually a guest speaker giving somewhat of an update on the City of Prairie View at the New Proposed Highway 36 Infrastructure Conference. Well, it's getting more and more past being a proposition because they just received another approval from the feds. They already had congressional approval to dredge the Port of Freeport. The supertankers that come up through the now expanded Panama Canal, the difference can be as much as 300 cars or 3,000 cars on the supertankers. So that's a big deal and the conference I attended a couple of years ago, Houston Gateway to the Americas, it only talked in terms of trillions of dollars that were being brought up from the ships that skirt through the Panama Canal. Typically, most of it goes through Port of Los Angeles, Long Beach, and the rest of it goes through New York Harbor. And this whole project is about dredging Freeport, building a freeway that comes up to 290 and having those trucks, including some rails that they're working on, but having those trucks deliver goods up through Texas into Kansas, Nebraska, Oklahoma, beyond, and tapping into those trillions of dollars that are now coming through Los Angeles and New York. That will change, that's just a game changer. It's a game changer. Down the road, but the approvals keep coming and they received one as recent as the Friday before the Monday conference. So it's just exciting stuff down the road for us because as they show the map and the cross-reference and discuss it, Prairie's on the map. So we are definitely in the conversation and with that type of activity, every time you build a new freeway, if you've been down Highway 99 lately or even if you look at 290, for those of us with a little history without telling our age, we used to ride that long fence. Now they call it Fairfield. It was just cows up there before. So these, these things are happening and coming. The, there are two other grants that the folks identified. That's why you see a question mark on the, on the project. We're discussing the feasibility of having them apply to them as well. Got somewhat of an informal because until it's done, you know, the state is. But our Checkers Restaurant and Gas Station Project on Highway 290 in the southeast corner of University Drive is at the final stages. It's in Austin. So that thing's looking real good because even about nine months ago, what they, well, 10 months ago now, what they told us was that anyone who got to that final stage, no one had been disapproved before. So working with the supportive state representative Cecil Bell, we're just trying to make sure we're not the first one who gets there to get disapproved in the final stages. But it's looking real good and again, we add food, services, jobs, revenue to our city and that's what we're working hard to do. The 1,400-bed student housing project is on schedule to have 700 beds ready by August for the students. And last checked, a little over a week ago, they had over 600 students who would preserve the space. The university had a waiting list of 900 current students, current students with no place to stay. As of about a month ago, they have over 5,500 new freshmen who applied to our wonderful university. So they're coming, they want to come and we need to do everything we can to help accommodate them. Met with Ms. Rogers about a week ago and the first two buildings have had their final sign-off and approval by Bureau Veritas with inspections and Assistant Fire Chief Bordeaux. And I appreciate the work that you all have done in double-checking fire pressure over there for Brookside and just the main line which affects everything along Riches Road. So we're looking good over there. But the tax revenue and increased sales tax, Mr. Johnson, with those 1,400 people living and spending in the city, because for those who don't know, about a year ago, the university had about 700 students in contracted hotels from Brenham to Cypress. That means not only were they not living and spending money here, they weren't getting a Prairie View experience. So we want them here and we're blessed to have some folks who are willing to invest in our city to give us some of the, what will be the best student housing, not in PB or Texas, in the United States. The amenities list is absolutely ridiculous, but wonderful because our students deserve the best. You know, they, they work hard for it and they study and we'll give them those things. The, just returned, actually I'm still returning. I haven't been asleep since 7:00 yesterday morning from visiting one of our sister cities in Watchon at Columbia. It's an Afro-Colombian city, several, former slaves several generations ago. And it was interesting to see a community of Afro-centric people who only spoke pure Spanish. It was just interesting. They've got some college students who are bilingual and they want to be translators. So in seeing the situation when I first got there last Tuesday, we started, got with the mayor and he liked the idea, so we actually started a bilingual Spanish-English program. It's already started. First thing I had to do was download Google Translator so I could talk to the mayor. And then I had him download it so he could talk back and we started having fun and he had community meetings already set up and a lot of positive things are taking place. So very excited. His neighboring city of Santander, that mayor and their council called a special meeting and shared the program with them and they signed up on it. So they have about nine, because the university is closer to their city, they've got about nine bilingual students and they're working with the others and we're going to make them ambassadors. They're scheduled to go before their respective conferences and it's going to be a campaign. We've already started designing the flyers because I told them, you know, if we're going to do something, I'll work through the trip because I know it's, it was a long trip, traveling all night, but it was very well worth it and just to see the appreciation that they had for just information that we have over here that a lot of people take for granted that some people don't have. But they've got 900 acres that was granted to the city some 30 years ago by the state of Calca. And we spoke with, actually I sent a text to- of Calca, and we spoke with, actually, sent a text to our Vice President of Research, Dr. Dr. Joby at the university, because they want some information and assistance on how to work that land. It's a very agricultural community, they've got a lot of sugarcane, corn, and other crops that they're already growing, but this land happens to be somewhat elevated, and years ago, former slaves used to work the property, they've still got the old big buildings and beds that were in there. But they also set up a meeting with the president of the University del Calca, and he had heard about bilingual things that we had talked about before going, or really texted and emailed about, because we couldn't talk. My Spanish is not that good. But met with him, and we signed a memorandum of understanding between the university and the city of Prairie View, and essentially what they're looking for is, I talked about our relationships with the university, and there are researchers, they're ready, the university is ready to bring over a few of our researchers, because of our agricultural and mechanical things that we have at Prairie View. They make some of the best high-end coffee in the country of Colombia, and it's just some impressive stuff, because they were founded in 1827, and are the, they house the country of Colombia's historical records, and they showed me some of the documents even when slaves came over, and whether they were from Cameroon or Nigeria, I mean, you read this stuff, and it was just, but they opened it up for us with the president and what have you, but it was just interesting. But they're that old and a pretty prestigious place, and they still want to partner with people like us in our university, so I'll be getting with President Simmons on that piece, because they sent her some coffee as well.
Item four, discuss, consider, and take action at Panther Hills apartment complex. You have a question, Councilman?
Yeah, could we get a copy of the grant that was submitted on the city's letterhead for the business funding? Can we get a copy?
No grant was submitted on the city's letterhead, Councilman.
You don't have to put grants on letterhead. Was there grants allocated to the city, or what? I don't want to talk about that.
There's a collaboration with the city, and yes, there was a grant submitted, just like the $100,000 research grant was submitted, just like the $0.5 million collaboration with the College of Engineering was submitted.
I'm asking, would you ask, would you get a copy?
I'll look to get it to you, just ask.
That's all right.
No problem, but when you said letterhead, you don't put the city's letterhead out there like that. It's just, and again, what I would encourage, because I know this is new for a lot of people, the point that I'd like to do during this, my first two years going into the second as mayor, is we need to all look at how and what resources we can bring to there, as, particularly as elected officials, to help the city make things better for our residents. So-